Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Welcome. We are going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you for your patience as we transitioned over into the boardroom. We'll call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, 5:09 PM. We'll call our regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. Board colleagues, Dr. Stubblefield, to all of our staff and to all of our guests who are present today. Welcome. If you're joining us, whether you're in person or online, welcome. Before we continue, we do have interpreters available. If you require or would like a language interpretation, we do have interpreters. So if you need an interpreter, we have interpreters available today. So just raise your hand or let one of our staff members know. We'll make sure that we have that for you today. As we do at every board meeting, we'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon. Welcome. Thanks for joining us. Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve today's regular agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Board, we will only have one executive session tonight. We will not require the second one. So just that quick update. Any other questions or discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll jump right into our agenda. Item number two, awards and recognitions. One of our favorite times when we get to recognize some amazing scholars and staff. So with that, I'd invite Ms. Middleton up as we present our employee of the month. Dr. Jones.
Good evening, board.
Evening.
Good evening, board president. We are happy to be able to, we're happy to bring to you the individuals who have been named employees of the month for classified and for certified. And so we are going to honor those individuals as I do my best to bring up the actual presentation so that you all can see this properly. Okay.
And as Dr. Jones is doing that, just a reminder, we will take individual photos with our employees of the month and our students of the month after all are presented today.
Yes, thank you. Our first individual is Dre Dickens. And Dre is a teacher associate at the Kansas City, Kansas Early Childhood Center, was nominated. It says, "I'm honored to nominate Dre Dickens, a dedicated teacher associate at Kansas City, Kansas Early Childhood Center for the KC KPS Employee of the Month Award." Over the past four years, Dre has consistently demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the students and the school community. However, this school year, she has truly done, she's truly gone above and beyond in her role embodying what it means to be a shining star at KCKECC. Dre was faced with a particularly challenging situation when she was placed in the classroom with a vacancy for a full-time certified teacher. This meant that she would be working alongside a substitute teachers who would change from month to month. Despite the unpredictability and the additional challenges this presented, Dre did not complain or shy away from her responsibilities. Instead, she proactively stepped up to ensure the students had the best and most consistent experience possible prepared for the students' arrival. Her dedication to creating a nurturing and stable environment was evident from the start. Since then, she has assumed the leadership role in the classroom, preparing lesson plans, organizing materials, and advocating tirelessly for the needs of her students. Dre has also provided individualized support to students, ensuring that each student receives the attention and care they need to thrive. What truly sets Dre apart is her contagious positive energy. She grows up every, she shows up every day with enthusiasm and a genuine love for her work, which has a profound impact on both the students and her colleagues. Dre exemplifies the core principles of our school, and her dedication to being better every day in every way is truly inspiring. For her hard work, leadership, and unwavering commitment to our students, I wholeheartedly believe that Dre Dickens deserves to be recognized as a KC KPS Employee of the Month. She is a shining example of excellence in education, and I am proud to work alongside her. That was submitted by Amber Block. The more she's here. Dre is not here, but we will make sure that the award is delivered to her, to her and her school. Our second, because we did not have one in September, so our second classified employee of the month who's being acknowledged is Kenya Frazier. Kenya is a teacher associate at, once again, the Kansas City, Kansas Early Childhood Center. Kenya is such a bright light for our students. She has a great connection with them, and they listen to her so well. She searches high and low to give our students what they need, and if it's not in our building, she is figuring out what can we do instead and finds a solution. She's been such an important team member for our school, too. She was placed in a new room with myself and a new teacher, not from KCKECC, and she has made us feel super comfortable and welcomed and showed us the ropes of the school. She continues to help with her teachers' classrooms when she is needed. When our principal asks Kenya to do something extra, Kenya never complains. She is always willing to step up and help. Kenya deserves a big recognition for everything she does. That was submitted by Kelsey Beatty. Once again, Kenya Frazier. For our certified staff, Nicole Davich, teacher at Morris Early Childhood Center. Ms. Nicole provides laughter and light each day. As we focus on mindfulness, she reminds us through laughter that we deserve happiness. Today, Ms. Nicole demonstrated true professionalism. A colleague wanted to share their negative point of view. Ms. Nicole respectfully reminded the staff member that we are here for our children. She asked the staff member to share those words that build and lift up. This took true character and confidence. This was submitted by Dr. Denise Deckard, the principal of Morris Early Childhood Center. Don't know if Ms. Nicole is here. Nice round of applause. Dr. Deckard will accept this on behalf of her teacher. And our last individual that we are honoring is Ms. Chelsea Krupcha. She is a teacher at J.C. Harmon High School. She is an exemplary educator whose impact on students and the community at J.C. Harmon High School in the Argentine neighborhood is nothing short of transformative. Her approach to teaching English is not just about imparting knowledge, but about fostering a deep, meaningful connection with her students and broader community. From the moment Ms. Krupcha steps into her classroom, it is clear that she embodies a passion for teaching that goes beyond the curriculum. She creates a welcoming and inclusive environment where students feel valued and heard. Her ability to connect with each student on a personal level is remarkable. She understands that each student brings their unique background, experiences, and challenges to the classroom. Ms. Krupcha is adept to recognizing and addressing these individual needs, ensuring that every student has the support they need to succeed. She employs innovative teaching methods that engage students and ignite their love for reading and writing, whether it's through interactive class discussions, creative writing exercises, or multimedia projects. She ensures that learning is dynamic and enjoyable. Her enthusiasm for English is contagious, inspiring students to explore and appreciate the subject in ways that they may not have considered before. Her impact extends beyond the classroom. She is deeply involved in the Argentine community, using her role as an educator to bridge the gap between school and community life. She actively participates in local events and collaborates with community organizations to support educational initiatives and literacy programs. Her commitment to community engagement is evident in her efforts to involve parents and local leaders in school activities, fostering a strong sense of collaboration and support. One notable example of Ms. Krupcha's community involvement is her work with the local library to create reading programs tailored to the needs of her students. She's organized book drives and literacy workshops that not only provide students with access to books, but also encourage them to become active participants in their own learning. Her effort, her efforts have significantly contributed to increasing literacy rates and fostering a culture of reading within the Argentine neighborhood. Ms. Krupcha also serves as a mentor and role model for her students. She takes the time to build meaningful relationships with them, offering guidance and encouragement both academically and personally. Her students often speak of her admiration, of their admiration and respect of her, noting how her support has helped them overcome obstacles and achieve their goals. She's a source of inspiration for many, demonstrating that with dedication and perseverance that can over, they can overcome challenges and succeed. In addition to her teaching and community involvement, Ms. Krupcha is known for her unwavering dedication to her own professional development. She continuously seeks out opportunities to enhance her teaching skills and stay current with educational best practices. This commitment ensures that her students receive a high-quality education and are prepared for future success. In summary, Ms. Chelsea Krupcha is a wonderful teacher whose contributions to J.C. Harmon High School and the Argentine neighborhood are truly exceptional. Her ability to connect with students, her innovative teaching methods, and her dedication to community involvement make her an invaluable asset to the educational community. Through her tireless efforts, Ms. Krupcha not only enriches the lives of her students, but also strengthens the fabric of the community, making a lasting impact on all those she encounters. Nice round of applause for Ms. Chelsea Krupcha and all of our employees of the month.
Can I ask a question? How does staff get nominated? What's the process for nominating staff?
So anyone can, there's a link online where anyone, any of our employees can nominate an employee for, for employee of the month, and they submit that. We vet those, at those, all of the nominations, and a team of individuals decide and determine what's been written, and we make a decision on who should be recognized. So we take those every month.
And that's like through our Intranet link, or that's through the school district link? I'm sorry, I want to.
It's a school district link that we have.
Okay, so it's staff nominating staff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, and congratulations to our employees of the month. Next, we have Dr. Campbell, who will introduce our students of the month. Good evening, Dr. Campbell.
Good evening, board president Lopez, vice president Russell, members of the board, Dr. Anna Stubblefield, our superintendent, participating staff, and audience. I am Dr. Judith Campbell, deputy superintendent of the district, and in the absence of Dr. Lucero, I am beyond excited to introduce our October students of the month. We will start with Jonathan Espinquanta Jr. Come on up, Jonathan. Jonathan Espinquanta Jr. is nominated for the Student of the Month Award for Citizenship by the team of Morris Early Childhood Center. They recognize Jonathan as a sweet and intelligent student who enjoys coming to school. He has quickly made friends in the classroom and demonstrates exceptional social awareness. Jonathan's kindness shines through his interactions with peers, particularly when he notices someone is struggling. A notable example of Jonathan's citizenship occurred when he helped a classmate who was having a difficult transition back to the classroom after recess. Without prompting, Jonathan approached his friend, offered his hand, and gently guided him back to class. The act of empathy and problem-solving demonstrates Jonathan's natural ability to recognize and address the needs of others. Jonathan consistently looks out for his peers and is always willing to lend a hand. His heart of gold and proactive approach to helping others make him an exemplary candidate for this award. Here is a fun fact about Jonathan. He loves his teacher, he loves yoga, and he loves the Chiefs. Go Chiefs! Thank you, Jonathan. Our next student, Ebony Campbell. Ebony Campbell is a student at Lowell Bruny, and she is receiving the award around positive behavior. Assistant Principal Ann Herman has nominated Ebony Campbell for Student of the Month in the Positive Behavior category. Ebony is a fifth grader who consistently exemplifies positive behavior and serves as a role model for her peers, making her an outstanding, I had to change my slides, making her an outstanding candidate for this honor. One of the most remarkable aspects of Ebony's character is her mantra, "Every day is a good day." This simply yet profound statement reflects her optimistic outlook on life, which she shares with those around her. Ebony's positivity is motivating and inspiring, whether in the classroom, during group activities, or in casual conversations. It was stated that Ebony truly embodies the spirit of our school. Her unwavering positivity and dedication to creating a supportive community make her a shining star among her peers. She consistently uplifts others and fosters an environment where everyone feels valued and encouraged. Ebony Campbell's remarkable attitude and commitment to her school community make her a deserving Student of the Month nominee. Her ability to inspire those around her with positivity is a testament to her character and leadership qualities. Here is a fun fact about Ebony. She loves to learn, and she loves to draw anime. Congratulations, Ebony. Our next student, Athena Moore, was not able to be with us this evening. However, Arrowhead Principal Lawrence Smith has nominated Athena Moore for Student of the Month in the Service Citizenship category. Athena's nomination is well-deserved based upon her exceptional contributions and character. Athena started playing saxophone in beginning band class as a sixth grader. She caught on quickly, worked very hard in class, and consistently advocated for herself when she needed extra help. As a sixth grader, she volunteered to play Amazing Grace as a solo in front of the entire school during Black History Month that took place in February, and she was amazing. In addition to how hard she works in class, she is also helpful to all other students. She helped coach another student she worked with who started band in the second semester and taught him how to begin playing the saxophone. She worked with the student daily and then reported to the teacher about what she taught, the information she gave him, and how he was progressing. She also took an alto saxophone solo to our annual middle school solo and small ensemble festival as a sixth grader and did an outstanding job with that. As a seventh grader, she coached another beginning saxophone student. As a seventh grader, she coached another beginning saxophone student and taught him how to get started. She played a few more solos for the school and took a solo for the solo festival. So far, as an eighth grader, she has been helping the beginning band classes with saxophone players and assisting the clarinet players learn how to put their reeds in their mouthpieces, which as a former clarinet player, that can be a very challenging task. She has been in the largest class a few times and has been instrumental with assisting with classroom expectations. She helped others to solve problems as they go on, and she has quickly become the teacher's right hand in all band classes and is always available to help with whatever is needed. Not only has she been an asset in music class, but she is also helpful in other classes and activities. She has participated in several student organizations, including school plays, student council, and the Cool To Be Kind Club, which focuses on being inclusive and helping students feel welcome here at Arrowhead. I don't know, it sounds like a future band teacher in the making, but in the absence of Athena Moore, let's congratulate her for her job well done. All right, I would like to welcome Arlene Escobar. Arlene is a high school student at Wyandotte High School and is displaying exemplary accolades as a student leader. She is actively involved in extracurricular activities and maintains a solid academic record. Her current positions include President of Wyandotte Youth Court and Vice Resident in the Parent-Teacher-Student Association, PTSA. As VP, she plays a crucial part in fostering communication between parents, teachers, and students. Arlene has an impressive 3.65 GPA, which shows her dedication to studies and academic excellence. Her extracurricular activity involvement includes Homecoming Queen Candidate and Manager for Wyandotte High School Football and Boys Basketball Teams. Arlene's combination of leadership, academic achievement, and community involvement makes her a deserving candidate for recognition this year. Her contributions not only benefit her school, but also inspire her peers, demonstrating the qualities of a true leader. Here is a fun fact about Arlene. She loves to be involved at her school and enjoys the community she has built. Arlene plans to attend Case State in the fall and study criminology. Then, she plans to transition to Washburn Law School to be a prosecutor. We have an attorney in the making. Congratulations, Arlene.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. And congratulations to all of our scholars, to your families, and to all the staff that support you and all the success that you have. We're going to take a picture, but first, we're going to do the final recognition on our agenda, which is to recognize National Education Week. And I'd ask Dr. Jones and Mr. Dom DeRosa to come forward as they've put together a proclamation for American Education Week for 2024. And I want to thank our staff, Dr. Jones and his team, Dr. Stubblefield, and to Mr. DeRosa, who is the President of the National Education Association of Kansas City, Kansas, for working together to make sure that we recognize American Education Week here at Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Thanks for all the work that you do. American Education Week is a time when we, at the district and across the country, celebrate all of our educators, all of our staff that work so hard to make sure that our districts uplift the education of our students. And work together and collaboratively, we know that as a district, we cannot function and do the great things that we do for our students without the support of all staff from all across the different departments, whether you're a teacher in the classroom, a custodian, a healthcare provider. We all work collaboratively to be able to do the great things that we do. So, thank you to our staff and to Mr. DeRosa and to your team for helping craft this as we proclaim American Education Week here in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools in November.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Once again, we are proud to present the American Education Week Proclamation for 2024. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, equality; whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for an access to a productive future.
And whereas all education employees, be they teachers, counselors, library media specialists, instructional coaches, curriculum specialists, parent professionals, instructional aides, school staff, administrative staff, custodians, health-related professionals, student service providers, maintenance and grounds personnel, technology specialists, bus drivers, nutritional service, building administrators, business services, human resources, district administrators and staff, the school boards, or substitutes, who work tirelessly to provide our children and communities with the care and professionalism and work together to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students.
Whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise.
Now therefore, we as representatives of the National Education Association of Kansas City, Kansas and the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, USD 500, do hereby proclaim November 18th through the 22nd as the annual observance of the American Education Week. Signed, this date of '24.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jones and Mr. DeRosa, and again, thank you to both your teams and to all of our staff who make it possible to be able to teach and learn and support our scholars here in the district. Okay, we're going to take a 12-minute recess while we take some pictures with our scholars of the month, and we'll do an individual picture with the student. Then, we'll invite the teacher or teachers, the staff who nominated them, and then we'll have the family as part of the picture. So, just so you kind of know what we're going to do next. So, we'll take a quick recess. Thank you.
And just if none of you are familiar with Wyandotte Economic Development Council, our mission is promote and strengthen Wyandotte County's economy through innovative approaches and programs, partnerships, incentives, and leadership across industrial, residential, office, and retail markets. For the past six years, we have collaborated with Unified Government Public Health Department on the Community Health Improvement Plan, where we serve as the lead agency for jobs and education pillar. Part of the reason for this is that we have always ranked first in the highest median wages paid in the state, but we are currently 61st in household income in Wyandotte County. We were 87th five years ago, so we have made progress since we've made this focus. So, and the average median wage for anybody, or the median wage for Wyandotte County is $23.88 an hour, which is just shy of $50,000 a year, if anybody would like to know that little fact. As of yesterday, we had 12,000 open positions in Wyandotte County, with the average wage of these positions was $54,000 a year. This presents incredible opportunity for Wyandotte County residents to advance their careers, and our residents are our greatest asset and are stronger with higher household income. So, our focus is really raising that household income for our county. And one of the ways that we've been doing this is an initiative that we have collaborated with Kansas Manufacturing Solutions, Workforce Partnership, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, the Public Health Department, and then all of the Wyandotte County schools, in providing Career Pathway Student Tours for our high school students. This has been a focus primarily for juniors and seniors, although we do welcome all students. We are really focused on those that are about ready to graduate and still not sure what they're going to do, but wanted to give them the opportunity to learn about different careers that are here in Wyandotte County, whether they plan on going to college to get a degree or get a certification from a technical school or just graduate from high school and go directly into workforce. There's incredible opportunities here in Wyandotte, as I stated, with 12,000 current open positions. So, the impact that we've had so far is that since the inception in 2022 that we started these Career Pathway Student Tours, we have taken 481 students, have been exposed to 40 different employers between 24 different tours, and Kansas City, Kansas Community College has awarded $12,000 in scholarships. On each one of the tours, we're giving away a $500 scholarship. For the students, all of the students on the tours have the opportunity to win that scholarship by asking questions regarding the career that they're learning about. The tour structure is that we have a tour in the morning and one in the afternoon. We have lunch at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, most of the time. most of the time. Sometimes we have tours all day at one employer. And that's where we also give out the $500 scholarship is over lunch. Today's winner was Justin Stiles from Washington High School. We were actually at BPU today. We toured both their power plant and their water treatment plant. Justin did ask the most questions. Rarely does the person that only asks one question get their name and actually win. But Justin did ask the most questions, and when he got it, he says, "I'm absolutely going to go to KCKCC." So it's great to hear that. Get emotional every time, and I don't want to make a fool of myself. So I also want to talk about Molly Hicks, who was a winner of the scholarship at the first tour this year with Fairfax High School. And she had gone on the tours last year, and she enrolled in the welding program at Kansas City Kansas Community College because of the tours last year. And she had stated to me on the tour this year that she fully plans to attend the FAME program or to participate in enrolling in the FAME program, which is a competitive enrollment. They only accept 20 students. But she wanted to make sure that she got into that, which is why she enrolled in the welding program this year. So there is impact being made, and there's been a lot of students that have actually won scholarships. And one of the best comments that I heard from one of the students is that they'll be the first person in their household to make $100,000, or first person in their family to make $100,000 a year. And that's the kind of impact that we are showing the students. They are learning about different opportunities with union trades, with manufacturing, and they're seeing that it's not a dirty job, that it's not for the high school dropouts. It is really a job, a career, that they can grow and expand with and have for a lifetime. These Career Pathway Student Tours are sponsored by those partnering agencies. The only responsibility for the schools is to make sure that they get the students there and providing the transportation. We take a maximum of 25 students, and this is the first year that every single tour has actually been maxed out. So where we actually had to turn some students away. And this is also the first year that we're offering more than one tour per school, and many of the Kansas City Kansas Public Schools have actually taken that opportunity to have more than one tour. The expense of this is also taken on by our FAME sponsoring companies, which FAME is Federation for Advanced Manufacturing Education. It's a five semester Earn While You Learn program at Kansas City Kansas Community College, where they go to class two days a week, and then they go to work for the sponsoring companies three days a week. So they've actually been picking up the tab for most of the lunches. When we spent an entire day at employer, like today at BPU, they picked up the tab for lunches. We'll spend an entire day at University of Kansas Health Systems, where they learn more than just about medical careers. They learn about the hundreds of different kinds of career pathways that are within the University of Kansas Health Systems. And with most of the careers that they're learning about, they're learning that they can actually start working with an employer, and if they want to go on for an education, the employer will pay for it. So our focus also through this is just really promoting the opportunities that are right here in Wyandotte County. We're constantly hearing about students that leave the county, go off to college, or just leave the county to go work other places, where we have incredible opportunities right here in Wyandotte County with all of our great employers. We're continuing showing this by also. I don't know if everybody got one, looks like. We started a career discovery page on our website that is also, I've noticed that many of the students have been utilizing it. The students that were there today had actually utilized it and prepared questions before coming on the tour from Washington High School. But our career discovery page allows students to go in, actually do an interest and value assessment, which all of them are used to doing. But this actually takes their interest and values and shows them the open opportunities that are available in Wyandotte County right now. It'll show what careers that they should go into, but then actually what, how many positions are open in that career, what the starting wage is. It also shows them the education or experience that they need in order to get those career opportunities. If a student decides they want to go into military or if somebody has retired from the military, there's a military section on there that they can find the career that they had in the military. It'll connect them to civilian jobs. They can create a login and build a resume on it. I have, I can go in there and see who actually is using it. And right now, out of all the schools that are in Wyandotte County, which there's 10 of them, of the high schools, the Kansas City Kansas Public Schools are the ones that are utilizing it. I haven't seen it from other schools using it yet. So the postcard that you received is the QR code for our career discovery page. So I encourage you to share that with any job seekers that you know, students. If they have questions, they're more than welcome to contact me. And one thing else I wanted to add is I hear from businesses daily. My colleague and I visit about 250 businesses a year, and we hear from them daily that they are interested in doing apprenticeships with high school students, that they would love to be a part of an Earn While You Learn program, whether the students are going to school part of the day and then working for them part of the day. And Workforce Partnership does have a grant, the Metal Art Grant, that does allow that. So I don't know if that's an opportunity here with the public schools, but that is definitely something that our employers are looking at starting and really introducing the students to different skilled trades and the unions that we have here in Wyandotte County. They could even work on your school buildings if you hire those union trades. So they could actually help and contribute back to the school that they went to. Most of these industries that we're actually showing to the high school students do not require a college degree, yet they could still be making $100,000 in five years. So last tidbit is that our workforce, recently being in an economic development conference, our workforce is now considered part of our infrastructure. It's just as important as our roads and our utilities for the businesses to grow and expand here in Wyandotte County. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Thank you so much, Monica, for sharing. Would open up the floor, Ms. Brownlee Page, for any questions for Monica?
First, thank you, because we need this. And I appreciate your enthusiasm, and you seem to care, and that means a lot. And you had, I'd just like to see us really push, making sure that if they can get a job, you know, you got these companies, if they can offer the kids a job, as well as, I know you have apprenticeships, and they're going to learn different things, but they need jobs. And they need to be able to sustain themselves. So if we can get that, and I like what you said, that they had grants, that they may be able to go to school as well as pick up a trade, a skill, or something.
Yeah, the Workforce Partnership has a Metal Art Grant, that they could actually pay for $4,000 of training if an employer hires them. So that money goes to the employer to help pay for that training.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional help, Ms. Drew?
I'd just like to say thank you. It's very good to hear the format, so the direction as to where a student can go in order to be able to reach their career, even if they don't enter college. And I just hope we continue moving forward in the right direction. Again, thank you so much.
You're welcome. This started as a request for one school, a one-time thing, and we said we wouldn't do it for one school, but we would do it for all of them. And now it's something that we thought we would just do for one year, and we're three years into it.
Good, great.
Ms. Russell?
I have the privilege of working in my full-time job with Ms. Breedy, but I just want to continue. I think every time that you talk about this program and what you all have been able to do, I learn something else. But I also just am inspired. As Ms. Page said, you are a person who is very dedicated to the success of not only the businesses in Wyandotte County, but also the success of our students to be able to work at those businesses. So thank you for your advocacy, your commitment. To my fellow board members, I would also, again, invite you. Ms. Breedy has sent us all the opportunities upcoming to stop in on a tour or be a part of the tour, whether it be the full day or half a day. Please reach out to her, Leslie, if you'd like to participate. I'm looking forward to going on the Saber Tour here pretty soon. But yes, thank you so much for providing that opportunity to us as well.
Yeah, and I do want to say thank you to Dr. Stubblefield and Mr. Birch, who attended the first tour with Fairfax. We toured Empire Candle together. And then I have to say, have a huge shout out to Kelly James. So if I could nominate somebody as an employee of the month, that would be her, because if it wasn't for her, the success for the Kansas City Kansas Public Schools, we wouldn't be as successful, because she has made sure that the teachers know exactly what they need to do and the impact that this is going to make on the students. Yes.
Kudos to Kelly. But because you mentioned Dr. Stubblefield and Edwin, they bragged a lot about the Empire Tour. So can we be, can we reach out and say, "Hey, can you tell me when you're going to this place again?"
To Empire Candle? Yeah, if they'll do another tour, we'll do another tour. You always walk away with a candle.
She didn't say that part. She was talking.
I left early, and I didn't walk away with the candle. It was, the kids were really, really engaged, intrigued, and asked lots of good questions. And several of them, like one of the students from Fairfax, was like, "I think I can work here. I think I'm thinking about applying," is what he said to Edwin and I. Like, they didn't realize, like, the different opportunities. So it was great to see.
We had a student from Wyandotte last year, while we were on the tour, actually on the company's webpage, and applying, and then went up to the HR director and said, "My resume is submitted. When can I meet with you?" So that's the impact. We were orange and V, but there is, I'm waiting for some just incredible stories to come from this. And that's one of the things I've asked the teachers to share, have the students share the impact that it's made with them. Haven't got any of those impact statements yet, but I'm waiting on them.
We know some people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breedy, and thanks for all the continued partnership with the school district. All right, we'll continue on with our agenda. Next on our agenda is community comment. Ms. Howar is signed up for comment. Unfortunately, could not be present today. Board, she did submit her comment, and it is posted on Board Docs as public content for folks to read. You can read that, her comment. And it was also emailed to all of the board members from Ms. Smith. So please take some time to review her comment. For those who have access or who can look up on Board Docs, you can see her comment there. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Board, item number five. I entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on the consent? Hearing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next up, I'd invite Ms. Carol Levers, our Executive Director of Libraries, for our library report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Stubblefield. With me this evening, I have two young ladies that will be sharing some information about our two signature programs we had this past month. Ms. Patrice Gonzalez is the Branch Manager of Ethel Schlegel Environmental Library. And of course, our new director, Laura Hunt, Director of Libraries, will be doing the Library in the Park. Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Okay. Technology is not my forte. I'm so sorry. We did it. Good morning, or good evening, everybody. It's good to see you all again. Like Carol said, my name's Patrice Gonzalez, and I'm thrilled to share some highlights from the 19th Annual Lawson Roberts Butterfly Festival, which took place on September 21st, 2024. It was at Mr. and Mrs. Ethel Schlegel Library, which is an environmental learning library inside of Wyandotte County Lake. Despite the weather, we had a great turnout of over 400 participants, joining us from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This year's festival was particularly special as we witnessed the largest number of submissions for our bug competition, our bug photo competition. So you can see the winners in here, just a few of them. We actually featured 16 children who participated and over 50 adults who sent in photos. One of the standout features of this festival was our guest speaker, Bug Nut Ed. His engaging talk captivated the audience as he showcased stunning photos, introduced live insects, including crickets, a woolly bear caterpillar, and super worms. Ed's passion for insects inspired many of our attendees, sparking curiosity and enthusiasm about the tiny creatures that play such a vital role in our ecosystem. We had a variety of fun and educational activities throughout the day. We had our Storytime Session, which allowed children to create their own caterpillar hats. Isn't this the cutest caterpillar you've ever seen? And the Monarch March Activity let students embody the majestic monarch butterflies on their incredible journey to Mexico. It was a sight to see as young participants flapped their wings and learned about migration. Another highlight was our face painting booth. Of course, that's always a big hit, as well as our edible insect station. It was delightful to see participants, if you see at the bottom middle, see participants trying new edible insects, such as chocolate-covered crickets, which our new director tried so bravely. It certainly added an adventurous twist to our festival. Throughout the day, we conducted butterfly tagging, allowing participants to learn about the vital research. Additionally, we offered seed packets, which is crucial for supporting monarch populations. Our craft activities were diverse and engaging, from a coloring contest to creating noodle bugs out of pool noodles. And one of the most exciting new additions this year was our pen pal activity. Children had the opportunity to color a coloring page of a life-size monarch. We gathered all of those monarchs, and we sent it to Mexico to our pen pals, and we're eagerly looking forward to receiving their response in the spring. So in summary, despite the rain, we had a fantastic, successful festival. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Patrice. And I was at the Butterfly Festival. I encourage everyone to go. It's an amazing event. And if you have not eaten a cricket, you know, what better time to start than with a chocolate-covered one? So I'm here today to talk about the 9th Annual Library in the Park. We had an amazing turnout. It was on September 28th. That was a Saturday. The line to get into the book sale was wrapped all the way down the street from the library to Ann Avenue. We got there early to set up our tents and our tables, get all the books out there. Library staff were there, working hard, carrying all those books around. And the event started at 11:00, but people started lining up at 10:00 a.m. and asking, "Can we get bags now? We want to get the books." And you'll see some photos on our next slide of those people stacking up all those books. We had tons of activities. We had bubbles and face painting, very popular. And we had some really great numbers from our turnout. So you can see some of these photos here. We gave away 149 passports. Those are the little activity sheets that people could use when they went from tent to tent. We had 371 people visit our Reader's Advisory Tent, 295 visit our Digital Services Tent, and 170 at the Schlegel Tent, and then 380 on our bus, just coming in and checking out the bus. So lots of new people seeing that. And we did have 600 ice cream cups that we gave away. So a lot of happy ice cream eaters that day. But we only had one "Are You Reading?", which is our mascot. You can see the back of him there in that bottom photo. But there are more photos on Flickr, so lots of cool things to see. If you want to go in the board packet, there'll be a link there to get to the Flickr page. So now I will open it up to any questions. Here's some, ooh, this is a beautiful slide. Here's the numbers that I talked about. So all the different activities and passports that we signed. Total book sale numbers were $3,167 for 15,000 items. So we made quite a nice amount there. Okay, and now, do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, and thank you, Ms. Hunt. Any questions? I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you all. Would now entertain a motion to accept the library director's report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, we are now under item 7A. Recommend that the Kansas City Kansas Board of Education approve the purchase for, from Midwest Bus Sales of three 20-passenger buses, each equipped with three wheelchair spaces for a total cost of $434,178, and three 71-passenger conventional buses for a total of $440,265. Combined purchase amount of $874,443 will be paid from capital outlay. Recommendation is submitted by Mr. Miguel Martin, Director of Transportation, Mr. Correll, Mr. Lilly, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions on this item?
Yes.
Ms. Brownlee Page?
I missed it. Are these, these are new buses, 2025.
Mr. Martin is nodding his head, yes. So these are 2025, brand-new buses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Board, it is recommended the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the Ignite Reading Intervention Platform Agreement for first and second grade students at four elementary sites, which are Banneker, Grant, Silver City, and Emerson, as submitted by Dr. Fernandez Flores, by Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions, comments on this item, Board?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Maybe I missed it again. I never saw a cost. How much is it?
It's, Dr. Campbell, if you have the cost, it's been paid for through a grant via the foundation, by the Hall Foundation, but it's through our KCKPS Foundation of Excellence. But Dr. Campbell can give you the total cost.
$352,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Board, next item is item 8A and B. These are for information purposes only. No action is being requested of the Board, but here for information. If you do have any questions, you can ask now or submit questions at a later time to Dr. Stubblefield. These may or may not come back before the Board at a future date. Questions on items 8A or 8B? Seeing none, we will continue with the agenda. But again, if you do have questions, please submit those to Dr. Stubblefield. Board, agenda item number nine are our legislative priorities. Board, we are bringing forward our legislative priorities. As we do it every year, we review our legislative priorities to review and to approve. At a future board meeting tonight is really for your information to review. Make any recommendations, ask questions if we need to make some changes. Now would be an appropriate time. These priorities get presented at our breakfast with our colleague districts around Wyandotte County to, to discuss our legislative priorities. But you have these in front of you tonight. Are there any questions, thoughts, comments, any recommended or suggested changes from any board members?
There was a recommendation, um, quickly. There was a recommendation to add kindergarten, but I don't see that change noted here.
No, it was, I sent it, I think to you and Mr. Lopez. Piper School District and Turner is not on their actual agenda because they had already adopted it. But Piper, Turner, and Bonner all said they are supportive of currently kindergarten. Kindergarten is not required or mandated, and they are asking the Wyandotte school districts to all join together and make it an item to say kindergarten should be required because kids could just technically show up and start in first grade.
So I know it's not on this document, but would that be something we would be interested in putting on our document, even though it's being asked to be adopted by underneath?
Other districts, are you? Yeah, I mean, I personally support it. We always talk about early childhood and starting kids as early as possible. Preschool nor kindergarten is required, but if you start with kindergarten, it will have a positive impact on students' academic progress.
Because there would be a funding and a policy asked there, correct?
Well, currently, if students show up, how the funding formula works, and they're here on September 20th, they're accounted for in the funding. So the dollars would follow the students.
Current dollars do fund full-day kindergarten?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Even though it's not mandated?
Yes. If students, it's just not required, yeah.
So is that something that this Board would like to discuss or take up or support that mandate for kindergarten?
We can add the language around, like, update this. Francisco can update it and have it on there, and then you can see what it looks like. And if you don't like it, we can take it off in the final version. But we can add it so you can see it.
I just wonder if, like, if you're formally going to, like, make a stance on something. Like, I understand us coming together as all of the Wyandotte delegation, but I also think there's something tangible about saying it's on our policy platform that this is what we're gonna... And I recognize that other districts, just because of their process, may not be able to do that. But we're in a place in our process that we can do that. So just my feedback. I'm happy to...
I'd be interested in seeing language drafted and brought, brought forth to the Board. I would be in agreement. I think if we're in a place where we can adopt it, I'd be interested in looking at it.
Can we level set? And maybe I missed the communication. I'm a little bit lost on what we're talking about. That's okay. It felt, I feel like we jumped in the middle of a conversation. I don't know if anybody else is lost.
No, she asked, could we add kindergarten to the, what was existed?
But then I also heard new policy, like, change. And maybe it's just me. I just need to help. I need a little help, sorry.
Ms. Russell asked a question about policy and funding. But what she was referring to is at the state level. Like, so if they mandated kindergarten, we would have to make sure that our policies reflect that, but we wouldn't do anything currently because we wouldn't need to. Funding-wise, if it's mandated, there is a certain amount allocated for each student when we do the September 20th count. So funding-wise, we should be okay. As long as that funding formula doesn't change.
And would we do anything to try to get more preschoolers to come to school?
We, so right now, we do make sure that we advertise and show that preschool is not required, but we have, we're kind of, we'll cap out preschool. Like, we have a certain number of seats, and a lot of that is funded through grants and some other things. So that's a little different than kindergarten. Preschool would require additional funds to come if you were going to require it for every child.
Have we ever thought about that? Or is funding the biggest issue? How would be funding, whether we offered more seats?
It would need to be funded before we talk about seats because we have limited space, staff, and those kind of things. That, that would take more of a commitment at the state and legislative and at the federal level to a certain extent.
Because so many of them come in behind that, I guess we just, I just assumed that they would go to preschool somewhere with Head Start or whatever.
Across the county or across the state, there are not enough seats or slots for every child to go to preschool just because of how the funding works and the staffing. So I think the districts and the superintendents who are talking about kindergarten has a structure. There, there are some kids who do not start school until first grade because kindergarten is not required.
Would you happen to know the numbers? You don't have to give it to me now, but if we could find that out.
I can try to find out, but I'm not for certain, yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry. I don't want to take us down this rabbit hole, but I'm gonna ask this one simple question. It might be a loaded question. Preschool, many of the preschool slots that we provide, and really, Ms. Clark got my mind rolling about it, are income-based? How many non-income-based, and maybe this is a question you can give back to me, non-income-based seats do we have? I think because that's the question. Even if we can't take everybody, how can we start? And I've seen, we saw it in North Kansas City, they did like a sliding scale or they did some other unique things for that.
So our, our students don't pay anything. Head Start specifically, I'm looking at the.
That access to the seats are income-based. That's what we're talking about. They're not.
Heads.
It's a poverty, it's a poverty guideline.
For Head Start, for the Head Start programs.
Which is age three and four or just age?
Their Head Start programs are only, they're the school-based programs, correct? I'll get back to you. But it's not all, like, it's not... So in the other programs, we have a specific ratio for the number of students who are identified or have an IEP and then non-IEP students.
Because I think what we're trying to get to is how do we get to those students who aren't going to qualify? Because Spark, you have to live in the Herman Cluster. For other, another program, you have to have a teenage parent or you have to have a parent who doesn't live in the home. So we have all of these Head Pre-K programs that have all these specialties. But we don't have an actual, I just want to send my kid to preschool program.
Yes, we do. That, I mean, kind of.
And I think those are the numbers we're trying to get, correct? Compared to the bigger bucket.
I will have Dr. Cook get that information to you because we have a variety of programs, and it's not necessarily the access to the seats. It's the way that is funded through grants and those sorts of things. There's not, like, when we do a count on September 20th, we're not counting our preschool students anywhere because there's not a set amount of dollars tied to it. It is like.
Because it's funded by those other.
Other, and that's across, so that is across the state, yeah. Technically, they're not apart because preschool, preschool nor kindergarten is not required. And so the funding is.
So we're saying we get funding for kindergarten?
Yes, because they include kindergarten in the K-12. Preschool, I'm just saying, it's, if you're gonna put it on the, I think it's on our platform.
It is on here.
Yeah, but that's where it is, if it gets approved, you would have to be clear about they need to add money to that one, yes. Like, if you're gonna require it, you have to add money, training, and for staff as well. Because there's a gap in, a bigger gap there than in other places. But I'll have Dr. Cook give a breakdown of all of the programs and who has access and what qualifications are.
Additional thoughts or feedback on the legislative priorities? Is there, I do want to go back to the request around adding language, draft language to mandate kindergarten. Is that something that other board members would be interested in seeing, language around that?
I would.
I would like to see it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, it sounds like there's some consensus to do that. So we'll bring this back. In the meantime, again, if there are questions on this Board that come up later, please submit those to Dr. Stubblefield. Otherwise, we'll just make sure that this cleaned up, up to date, and we'll include draft language on the mandate for kindergarten.
And just a reminder, the breakfast is, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask one one question about the high-quality staffing. So it's come to my attention a little bit in the substitute pool that currently during COVID, they allowed substitutes to stay in a certain classroom for longer. So before you could stay the entire semester, now it's gone back to the 30-day, which means every 30 days that a substitute could move a classroom. Could we be more specific in our high-quality staffing to?
That's not a legislative change. That's a Kansas, KSDE, yeah. They do that.
That's a certification change?
Well, it's emergency sub. Because if you have an emergency sub license, that's when you can't. But if you do not, like, if a retired teacher or you have a certain, different license, it's not impacted. But that's KSDE, not legislators.
Additional questions?
And you were gonna tell us, remind us again about the breakfast.
The date for the breakfast.
The date for the breakfast is December 4th. It'll be at Turner High School, starting at 8:30.
You haven't RSVP'd, please make sure you let Ms. Smith know so we can have accurate numbers for that. Right, I know. I accidentally, Board, I accidentally skipped item 6B, so we're gonna jump back up on the agenda to the Turner Quarterly Report. Recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education accept as an informational item. The Turner Quarterly Report is submitted by Ms. Carol Levers and by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. Your motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? And apologies, Ms. Levers and team. Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Board, we'll jump down to item 10A. Board, these are board policies. These were reviewed during our board retreat and are up for review today as well. And I will pass it along to Mr. Goheen to walk us through our policies today.
So the board policies that are on the agenda tonight in items 10A through 10F, these are the policies that were brought up during the board retreat that I understood the board wanted to consider for first read. As you're both aware, I was attending the retreat by phone. I couldn't hear very well from the meeting. So these are literally the way they were proposed at the retreat because I couldn't hear what changes you guys wanted or didn't want to make. So that's how they're presented. I am happy to make any changes the board wants, but they are, they are as-is presented at the retreat because that's what I had.
Any feedback for Mr. Goheen on these policies? There were a few recommended changes. We apologize, Mr. Goheen.
No, it was on me because I wasn't physically present, but I, I literally just could not hear what you're saying.
We didn't have a great audio setup that day, so apologies for that. But there were a few recommended changes that the board, that there was consensus around. So, Board, I would suggest maybe if Ms. Smith, if you could go back in your notes with those recommended changes that the board had discussed and get those to Mr. Goheen so that he can do a revised revision of these policies with those changes implemented. Do we need to?
What I would, what I would do is go ahead and adopt them for first read tonight. If there's a recording or notes that Ms. Smith has, I can look at those and try and make changes. If individual board members remember specific changes and could just email those to me, then I'll make revisions for the second read. And that way, we've got it, we got it moved along, and by the third read, we'll have a final version that everybody's happy with.
Great. So, Board, if you're okay with that, we could have a motion to accept for first read. Do you need these individually or could we do them as a group?
You could do them all as one motion if that's okay with Ms. Smith.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve accept for first read policies CJ, FC, BDA, BBC, BCBI, and BCE?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, Ms. Russell?
So we made a motion in that meeting to remove the one policy.
Right. BG was deleted at that meeting by motion.
BBG.
Is there any follow-up steps that would need to take place?
That one, that policy is eliminated from the board handbook or board policies at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. Hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we will hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just a few quick updates. I had the opportunity to attend the KCKPS Marching Band Festival this past weekend at Wyandotte High School. It was really exciting to see our talented students from all. It was really exciting to see our talented students from all, from all of five of our high schools. I want to thank the music instructors as well as Ms. Elizabeth Burns and all the staff who helped to coordinate this awesome event. Also, at that event, they did recognize Mr. Reginald May for his contributions to the district while he was here, I think for over 25 years, and the impact that he had. Two of the current band instructors were a part of Slago's band, so they did recognize and honor him on Saturday. Last week, on October 16th, we celebrated Unity Day. October is just a reminder of anti-bullying. Everyone who participated, well, those who remember to wear orange to stand against bullying and to promote acceptance, kindness, and inclusion. We just want to remind everyone that that's something we should be doing daily and continue to have a focus on anti-bullying. Also, last week, last Monday, as a district, many of our schools celebrated and honored Indigenous Peoples' Day. Indigenous People's Day was Monday, October 14th. It's an opportunity for all of us to honor the contributions of culture, history, and history of our, of the indigenous community. Together, our backgrounds, cultures, and experience make us a stronger nation. Kansas Can. Earlier this month, KC KPS was selected as a recipient, recipient of the Kansas Can Star Recognition. The Kansas State Department of Education and the Kansas State Board of Education selected KC KPS for exceptional work. Our district is doing it in the following areas, social, emotional growth. Last year, you might remember, we received a bronze, but this year, we received the gold level. That is the highest level that you can get. So congratulations to everyone who is making sure that work is happening. And then, this year, for the first time, we were recognized for our individual plans of study. We received the copper level, but they already are making plans and putting things in place to make sure that that, we continue to make progress in that area and then the other areas that you can receive the honors from. So, a big shout out to all our students and staff for working hard each day to make that happen. Lastly, congratulations to J.C. Harmon students, debating forensics team for finishing third place overall in sweeps at the debate Kansas City Tournament held at Wyandotte High School on Tuesday, October 15th. Debate team consists of first-year students, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, that would be freshmen. Edwin wrote this, so first-year students are freshmen. The team is also proud of how far they've come since their debate journey began. Some students say they overcame their shyness, improved their confidence, and are now better to prepare when challenges arise. I'm just messing with Edwin as I was reading that. So, congratulations to them. And since the last board meeting, we did have our annual Caring for Kids kickoff breakfast here at Central Office. The event allow representatives from KC KPS, the Caring Kids Network, and community partners and volunteer groups to come together and discuss the district needs and put a plan in place. This year, we have 46 community partners who have committed to helping more than a dozen schools at KC KPS. Our goal is to continue to grow our Caring for Kids networks within our schools to eventually have all of our schools a part of it. So, thank you to everyone who made that happen as well.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Lots going on, like always. Just a couple of notes from me, board. On Saturday, this past Saturday, I was able to attend the mayor's town hall, and I served as a panelist along with other taxing entities, including BPU, county administrator, the community college, the mayor and a commissioner, and Mr. Dupree, our district attorney. It was a great conversation. Questions from the community were asked of all of the panelists, and it was a great time to be able to share just information that we're doing here at the school district. I was able to share about our upcoming bond and also about some of the academic successes that we've seen, not just at Sumner, but at all of our schools. There was a specific question about some of the successes at all of our, all of our schools, and it was great to just be able to share those points of pride that we are seeing at Washington, at Wyandotte, at our elementary schools, our middle schools. So, just a great opportunity to give some feedback and to hear, hear some feedback from our community as well about some of the concerns that they have and questions that they have. So I appreciated that. One of the highlights for me was I got to meet a young man named Van Leeuwen. After the, the event, he came up. He is a graduate of our district. He graduated in 2015, I believe. He said, from Wyandotte High School. He also went, attended Central Middle School. He's the current, currently working for Boeing and the current president for the Chin Youth Organization of North America. And just, he was really proud to be there and to just hear about some of the things happening at the school district and wants to be more involved. He's an engineer, doing some amazing things in his life and for our community, lives, wants to live here, lives here in Kansas City, Kansas. And so I just think an example for, for our students. But it was great to see him present and ask some questions and come up and chat with Dr. Stubblefield and myself afterwards. So, thank you, Van, and wants to get in, be engaged in what the school district is doing, so.
And what high school did he attend? I thought I missed that.
Wyandotte High School, once a bulldog, and he knew it too, always a bulldog. They knew it, so.
You knew you was about to get set up.
So, congratulations to Van and thanks so much for coming up to, to share. And then, the only other thing I'll share tonight is, you know, there's an important election coming up in a couple of weeks. Democracy's on the line here, and I just encourage everybody to get out and vote, make your voices heard, make sure you vote, and, and encourage your friends and family and everybody that you know who is able to vote to make sure that they get out there and vote. It is so critical, so important, very important issues on the line. And just really encourage everyone to make sure that your voices are being heard and that you vote. And I'd be remiss to say again, we do have a bond initiative that is on the November 5th ballot. Please vote on that as well. Make sure that you make your voices heard on that initiative that's out there for a stronger future. So just make sure you vote and tell your friends and family to vote. So, with that, I'll open it up to the floor to share. And Ms. Page, I know you were elected, are you, will you also be on the ballot?
Yeah.
November 5th, so make sure you get out and vote for Ms. Brownlee Page as well as she takes her seat in that office. So, thank you. And Dr. Nguyen as well, I believe, will be on the ballot. So, two candidates are, make sure you get out and vote. I'll open it up to the floor, Ms. Drew.
Just like to say that on Friday, October 18th, Ms. Page and Dr. Campbell and I attended the Bristol Seafood Restaurant, which was sponsored by Scholastic. They gave away some books, and I have them here, and I would like to donate them to the Welcome Center so that you can have them for when kids come in. They're in the board clerk's office right now, and so before I leave, I would like to donate them to that. And then, I, I went to several other things, but the one thing that I was greatly impressed with, on October 15th, the student leadership, I was here from 8 o'clock in the morning till 1:00, to hear the students from the high schools actually giving input as to what they want and how they are, they feel that the schools can improve and what they were willing to do. And I just wanted to say thank you to our superintendent and others who were in charge to make sure that the kids were given an opportunity to give their voice, to speak out as to how they can do better as they are being educated within our USD 500 school district, and that's all I have. Thank you.
That's great.
Can I just add to that? So, Dr. Selena Swillick and her team organized that, but we are just for board, so board members are aware. So thank you for mentioning that. Tomorrow, with the superintendent advisory group, we are sharing that, and we're going to have them to give feedback on what are like three to five that we can prioritize and then wrap back around to that group to actually see if we can make some movement on some of the things that we shared.
Thank you, Ms. Drew, for sharing that.
Let me know if, starting later in the day for high schools makes that cut. That's something loud and clear that I heard from students, that they want their high school day to start later than that early morning. So anyways.
Start loud and clear, who did it start with? Who proposed the idea?
It was a question.
And then it was loud and clear, y'all. No, but I also, sorry. Dr. Stubblefield, I also was going to follow up with Dr. Kenees because I had mentioned it to a couple of board members who were unable to attend, if there could be a synopsis of the event. We can share. She has, I think, now in the slide deck and notes, so I'll share it out. Okay, appreciate it. In addition, if she could tell us the date for the November one, for middle school, I think. But, just a few comments that I had was, the boundary committee is now accepting applications for anyone who wants to be knee-deep involved in enrollment and geographic information as well as feeder cluster. It will be taking applications until October 31st. So if anyone is interested or anyone knows anyone who would be interested in those conversations, please have them complete that application. The facility committee is also going to reconvene in November to review some information. And so, board members, I will be sending an email out to you regarding your candidates that you would like to either continue on the committee or if you would like to suggest someone else. And then, hopefully at the next board meeting, I will be able to bring that for everyone to review the facility committee folks. And then, I was not able to attend, but Dr. Tiffany Lewis has ended her time at the district, and so I just wanted to publicly say thank you for her leadership and the systems and the things that she was able to create while she was here to ensure that our nursing department as well as our staff were supported through a very trying series of years with regards to the pandemic and thereafter, and just really grateful for her leadership and the guidance that she's been able to provide our district. Lastly, I also was able to attend the student leadership and just wanted to comment that really did a phenomenal job. I didn't, everything Dr. Kenees does is great, but to also set a vision and see things come to fruition in a way that was really engaging and informing for our students. Many of them left that day saying like, oh, this was really great. I felt heard. I, and just, it was just very authentic, and those are moments that I don't take for granted that we have with our students. And so, just appreciate all of the work and input that was taken on that day. Thank you.
Ms. Russell, Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the Slago Washington Homecoming Game. It was really nice to see all the families come out, people in their colors, no matter what age, representing their school. So, thank you to Washington and how they were able to really welcome the community. So that was exciting. Secondly, I attended Upward Bound, so Upward Bound supports our students, and I attended one of their regularly scheduled meetings on Saturday. They are a huge supporter of the students that they, that are included in that program, and so I just want to thank those individuals that put a lot of time and effort into making sure that our students have a positive experience when they're going through the program and the experiences that they are able to provide. So, thank you.
Ms. Russell, or Ms. Clark, I'm sorry. Ms. Brownlee Page?
Okay, I attended the academic meeting that Ms. Drew was head of, and I want to thank those families that came from Slago and Harmon, and especially the Slago crowd. They were pumped up, ready, and they want to just get everybody energized, and we need that. And I want to thank them for what they brought to the meeting and thank Dr. Campbell for helping us out, clearing up some things, some misconceptions. So it, it helped tremendously. As Ms. Drew stated, we went with Dr. Campbell to the Scholastic Book Forum at Bristol's, which was really nice. And then, on the 16th, I got a chance to stick my head, and I apologize right now, I can't remember the young lady's name, but they had a meeting for the translators, and the kids were doing a phenomenal job. And it's important, I think we all need to speak more than one language, because the more, the better, and the more opportunities we have. And they were getting ready so that they could help out with parent conferences, and there were some adults who volunteered to help them out as well, and they did an exceptional job. And I too would like to thank Tiffany Lewis for the job that she did while she was here to help our kids, her passion, her dedication, and, and whatever she could do to make sure our children were safe. And then, lastly, on a sad note, I don't know if any of you out there remember Gail Allen? She taught at Central Middle School. She also taught at what we now call Carl B. Bruce, which was Northwest. They had her funeral this past Saturday. And we also lost Wilma Wilson, who was a former bus driver for the district. They had her funeral this past Saturday. And I know there were others, but that's all I knew. But we always want to mention that because we've had some good people come through our district who've touched the lives of adults as well as children. And whenever we can, we need to give them homage, because this is not an easy job. But those of us who do it, love it, and really want to do something to help our kids. So if you would keep their families in, in your prayers.
Thank you, Ms. Brownlee Page. Mr. Mylan?
I would just like to just thank Dr. Campbell, she being a part, and how she's leading the academic portion, what she does. I was a part of the academic meeting as well, and it's so very enlightening to, to hear from the parents what's needed and whether progress is being made when it comes to learning and what's available. Because often, to all, we get hung up on, on certain things when we get to talking about buildings and other things that are outside of the classroom. It's like that it's not there, it's not happening. But I would just like to encourage other, if, as a way, we can encourage other parents to be a part, express their views and, and their, their concerns, not necessarily in a negative way, but a positive way of, of being influenced, the whole community and what's available, that we are making progress in the learning environment and the education part. You talk about diploma plus and, and all of that, and you commend her by doing a good job. The parents give feedback and we listen, and, and, and that's very, very important. And I'm, I had to be a part of that, have, be a part of the academic committee, doing that that we shared with in the past, past week to, the positives, the positives. I'll be, be relationship, it's a stickler with me, relationships and being positive because the negative is always going to be there. But just share the positive of what's going on in, in the district and, of course, at the academic and the classrooms.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. With that, thank you, board. Next, I had entertain a motion to recess to executive session for a consultation with the attorney on matters, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 15 minutes to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Jones, Mr. Lilly.
Dr. Irvin and Chief Tarek.
Thank you. Going in for 15 minutes at, going in at 6:50? Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.[490.47]
All right.
I know that you.
I have a, it's Leslie. You let me know when you're ready. Okay. We have a motion to return to open session, please.
So, second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew. Andy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Board. Um, have a great and safe flight, um, to CUBE, for those that are attending. Um, we look forward to hearing back. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night. Vote.